Good evening. My name is Pamela Hoyt Dennison. I'm the Administrator of Waste Programs and I'm going to be the Hearing Officer tonight, presiding over this public hearing. For the record, it's Tuesday, December 3rd. It is 6:01 PM. We're assembled at the Profile School located at 691 Profile Road in Bethlehem. And this public hearing is now officially open. We are recording this hearing. We're here tonight to receive oral testimony as well as written testimony, if you have written testimony to submit this evening, on a solid waste permit application submitted by North Country Environmental Services, or tonight you'll also hear us refer to that entity as NCES. NCES submitted that application to the Department of Environmental Services. You will hear me tonight refer to the Department of Environmental Services as both the Department and DES. Specifically, NCES is requesting the Department to modify Solid Waste Facility Permit Number DES SW SP 03002 to authorize an expansion of the NCES landfill located at 581 Trudeau Road in Bethlehem, New Hampshire. The expansion would be into an area to be known as Stage Six. For context, I'd like to provide some regulatory details pertaining to the application. Under New Hampshire's statute, RSA 149M, and the state's administrative rules for solid waste management, landfill owners are required to obtain a solid waste permit from the state of New Hampshire. Other permits and approvals are also required, but this evening we are focusing on the solid waste permit. The existing landfill is currently operating under the aforementioned permit, that was number DES SW SP 03002, which was issued by the Department for the areas known as Stage One, Two, Three, Four, and Five. NCES is now proposing to expand the landfill beyond its current permitted capacity and beyond its currently permitted footprint. Under New Hampshire State Administrative Rules for Solid Waste Management, NCES must apply for and obtain a new or modified solid waste permit for the proposed expansion. Thus, on January 14th, 2019, this year, NCES submitted its initial application to modify the existing permit to increase the capacity of the landfill by about 1.22 million cubic yards and to extend the facility's operating life expectancy by about 2.3 years. Including additional submittals by NCES subsequent to the initial submittal made last January, the Department deemed the application to be complete on October 21st, 2019. The Department's currently reviewing the complete application in accordance with applicable statutes and rules to determine whether that application satisfies the criteria for approval. Jamie Colby, who is seated on my right, I'm going to introduce my colleagues in a moment here, will provide additional information about the review process for the application after I'm done speaking. In order to ensure that the Department has all information necessary to evaluate the application, we are now seeking the public's comments on that application. On October 30th, 2019, public notice of this hearing was published in the Caledonia Record and the Littleton Courier newspapers. Copies of that notice were placed on every seat in this room. If you didn't happen to get one, there's a copy at the front table. That notice includes the date, time, and place of this oral hearing, and information for obtaining a copy of the application for review. It also states that the Department is accepting written comments on the application until 4:00 PM on Friday, December 20th, 2019, and it includes instructions for submitting written comments by that date and time. In addition to publishing the notice in the Caledonia Record and the Littleton Courier, notice was provided via the DES Municipal EcoLink publication on October 31st and November 27th of this year. Notice was also provided on the Department's website. I promise to introduce my colleagues, and I shall do so. Here with me tonight, seated on my left, is Director Mike Wimsack. He is the Director of the Waste Management Division at NHDES. Seated on my right is Jamie Colby, Permit Engineer with the Solid Waste Management Bureau. Seated further on my right is Deborah Sonderiger, also representing the Solid Waste Management Bureau this evening. And over at the table where you came in is Tyler Davidson. He is a Waste Management Specialist with the Solid Waste Management Bureau at DES. And standing in the back is Jamie O'Rourke. He is a hydrogeologist, also with the Solid Waste Program at DES. I would ask that the applicant introduce their team at this time, if you would. Joe?
Hi, I'm John Gay. I'm an engineer with the Solid Waste Management. Tonight, we have Kevin Roy, Manager of the Landfill in Bethlehem, Rebecca Metcalf, and Jeff Well in our Community Affairs Group, Bob Brillo, our Engineer for the Facility, and Tim White, our Hydrogeologist for the Facility.
Thank you. Now I'm going to discuss how the night's going to unfold, what's on this agenda. As noted on the agenda, this hearing is going to fall out in three parts. First, Jamie Colby, again seated on my right, will explain the solid waste permit application process and the criteria the Department must use to make its decision to approve or deny the requested permit modification. Jamie will also explain where we are in the application review process and the next steps after this hearing. Second, representatives of NCES will provide a description of the proposed landfill application. And then third, and last, but certainly not least, we will accept public comment on the application in an orderly fashion. Anyone wishing to make oral comments or submit written comments for the Department to consider during its review of the application will have the opportunity to do so during this hearing. The ground rules for the testimony portion of the hearing are as follows. If you wish to provide oral comments, please fill out one of the yellow or manila-colored testimony cards that are located at the table at the entrance, and give your card to Tyler, who will pass them on to me. I will call people up to speak in the order that I receive the cards. If you have a writing disability, please ask Tyler to assist as needed. Depending on the number of people who wish to speak, I may set time limits to ensure everyone has an opportunity to speak at least once and still get home to their families and other obligations at a reasonable time. If you're unable to finish your comments in the time allowed initially, there will be an opportunity to finish your testimony after we have cycled through all of the sign-up cards. We will continue that cycle until everybody has been able to provide the testimony they came tonight to provide. Because we're frequently asked whether a speaker can yield their time to another speaker, let me address that point by simply saying no. Instead, we're going to cycle through the stack of cards, again, as many times as may be required to give everyone time that they need to provide their comments. In other words, the person you might wish to yield your time to will have ample opportunity to testify, provided they complete a sign-up card and wait their turn. When I call your name, if you decide you don't wish to speak at that moment, just let me know. I will either place your card at the end of the list to be called on after all of the speakers have cycled through once, or if you're absolutely certain you don't want to speak at all, then we will just set the card aside. So again, in light of that, if you think you might like to speak, I would recommend fill out a card now, and if, at the time I call, you've changed your mind, that's fine too, but at least you get your card in the stack, okay? And it will help me gauge also how many speakers we're trying to accommodate. Written testimony. If you wish to turn in written testimony this evening, please submit it to Tyler. He will receipt stamp it and secure it, so that it becomes a part of the official record. Once again, you don't have to turn in written testimony tonight. You have until December 20th at 4:00 PM. It can be mailed, emailed, or walked into the Department, and the instructions for doing so are embedded in the public notice. Again, you should have had a copy on your chair. If not, there are additional copies at the front table. Lastly, all persons who fill out a speaker card will be placed on a service list to be notified when the Department has made a decision on the application. If you don't want to speak tonight, but you still want to be on that service list, there's a piece of paper up on, there's a list at the front table. Add your name to it, and we will then include you. I'm sorry, ma. I got that all jumbled up. If you sign up on the card, you'll be on the service list automatically. If you are not speaking and you want to be on the service list, please fill out the other list that is at the front table. As I indicated earlier, this hearing is being recorded. Therefore, during the public testimony session, speakers must use the microphone. They also must state their name and address and their affiliation, if any. When giving testimony, we need you to face us so we can hear you clearly, and, so that we can hear you clearly. I will remind you to do so if you can. If you have a standing disability and can't come to the front mic and stand, we will set up a seating station for you. If you have a walking disability and you can't come to the front, we will make an accommodation. When I call your name, please just let me know that, all right? All right, a few logistics. Emergency entrances, exits, I mean, are labeled where you came in. And I'm told there's one on the right. In the event of an emergency that requires evacuation from the building, this hearing will be automatically closed. If it appears we can return to the building within a short period of time this evening to reopen the hearing, we will do so. If we cannot reopen the hearing tonight and we have not cycled once through all of the speakers requesting to be heard at the time of the evacuation, we will endeavor to come back to Bethlehem to reopen the oral hearing on another date and time to be determined, which we will announce to all persons on the service list that I just spoke of, and we will also post it on the DES website. In either case, the public comment period for receipt of written testimony, again, remains open until 4:00 PM on December 20th. And last but not least, in terms of logistics, the restrooms are out these front doors and to the left. Are there any questions about the procedures?
This is not procedural. I just wanted to let, you know, there's a white pickup truck outside with the headlights go on, I guess.
White pickup truck outside with headlights on. Thank you. All right, now I'm going to ask Jamie Colby to move us into Part Two, and she will provide information about the solid waste permitting process, where we are in that process, and next steps after this hearing closes.
Thank you, Pam. Hope I can sit close enough to the mic for all of you to hear me. Good evening. As Pam stated, my name is Jamie Colby. I work in the Solid Waste Management Bureau at the Department of Environmental Services, and I'm responsible for managing review of the application for expansion. For context, the Solid Waste Bureau regulates the management of solid waste primarily by regulating the facilities that handle solid waste. We accomplish this through administration of a permitting system as required by the Solid Waste Management Act, RSA 149M. North Country Environmental Services, or NCES, operates a solid waste landfill in Bethlehem, New Hampshire that has been permitted by the Department. As allowed by the New Hampshire Solid Waste Rules, NCES has submitted an application to the Department to expand its existing solid waste landfill in Bethlehem. In a few minutes, representatives of NCES will describe the proposed expansion in more detail. However, to get us all started on the same page, I'm going to briefly describe the existing landfill and the application we're here to receive testimony on, and how the Department reviews an application like this. The NCES landfill is a commercially operated, privately owned landfill. As is typical of commercial facilities, the landfill has an unlimited service area. That is, it is allowed to accept waste from anywhere. The landfill has a footprint of approximately 46 acres. The permitted height of the landfill is elevation 1,480 feet as reference to the National, or as reference to the North American Vertical Datum of 1988. That's about 140 feet above the entrance at Trudeau Road. The landfill has a double liner system. That is, the waste is contained in two layers of a heavy-duty plastic liner. Leachate is collected from the landfill and trucked off-site for disposal. Landfill gas is collected from the landfill and burned off or flared at the landfill. Flaring of landfill gas is regulated under the facility's air permit, which is separate from the solid waste permit. Groundwater quality around the landfill is monitored multiple times per year. Groundwater monitoring is regulated under the facility's groundwater permit, which is separate from its solid waste permit. That's a very brief overview of the existing facility. We are here this evening specifically to receive testimony on NCES's application for expansion of its existing landfill. As stated in the public notice, NCES proposes to add Stage Six, which includes an approximately 5.7-acre expansion, with the expansion being achieved by a 100-foot lateral extension of the southern and eastern limits of the landfill, as well as a little filling up the current side slopes and on top. The proposed expansion would increase facility capacity by about 1.2 million cubic yards and extend the facility's life expectancy by about 2.3 years, which is estimated to take the facility's operating life into the fall of 2023. In addition to the application for expansion, NCES has requested a waiver of certain design requirements in the solid waste rules. Specifically, NCES is seeking a waiver of design requirements for previously built liner systems. The liner systems were built in accordance with the rules at that time. However, those requirements have since changed, and NCES is seeking a waiver to the new requirements so that they can fill up those slopes a little bit. Again, we will hear additional details about the proposed expansion from NCES in a few minutes. Now I'd like to describe how the Department reviews a solid waste facility application and some of the criteria used to evaluate the application. Generally speaking, review of an application occurs in two steps. The first step involves a completeness determination. That is, we evaluate whether or not we have all of the information required by the rules. The second step involves a technical review, when we evaluate the technical details of the application and ultimately come to a decision whether to approve or deny an application. The first step has been accomplished. The Department has deemed NCES's application complete. Once we do that, we put out a notice stating that the application is available for public comment, and we schedule a public hearing, which we are all at tonight. We are requesting public comments on NCES's application for expansion, and we will consider public comments when making our decision on the application. We have not made a decision yet. While we are receiving public comments, the application is concurrently undergoing technical review. During technical review of an application such as this, we will look at all of the requirements for an expansion, including siting, design, construction, operation, and closure of the facility. For example, during review of the design, we will evaluate whether the proposed expansions include the required two liners, whether the expansion includes a leachate collection system, and whether it includes the stormwater management features required by rule. Another set of criteria we evaluate includes whether the facility can likely be operated in accordance with the solid waste rules. For example, the permittee is required to control to the greatest extent practicable noise, odors, vectors, which includes bears and rodents, as well as litter and other nuisance conditions. When evaluating these operating criteria during review of an application, we look mostly at the facility's operating plan. A facility's operating plan is the manual or instruction book for running the solid waste facility. The operating plan includes details, like what waste the facility is authorized to receive, hours of operation, waste acceptance and rejection procedures, what to do with leachate and landfill gas, routine inspection, monitoring, and maintenance requirements, as well as contingency or emergency plans when something out of the ordinary happens. We also evaluate the preliminary closure plan, this being the preliminary design for closure of the facility, and it includes details for the final cap. In addition, we require the landfill permittee to establish and maintain a financial assurance plan to guarantee the cost of facility closure. During the technical review step, we evaluate the financial assurance plan to the extent that the proposed change affects it. Further, as a matter of practice and consistent with the solid waste rules and statute, we request that the New Hampshire Department of Justice conduct a background investigation of the applicant. During the technical review step, which can be quite busy, if you haven't picked up on that, we also evaluate whether the proposed landfill expansion provides a substantial public benefit as required by the Solid Waste Management Act, specifically RSA 149M11. The Department is required to determine whether a proposed solid waste facility provides a substantial public benefit based upon the following three criteria, and I'm going to slightly abbreviate the criteria. Criteria one, the short and long-term need for a solid waste facility of the proposed type, size, and location to provide capacity to accommodate solid waste generated within the borders of New Hampshire. Criteria two, the ability of the proposed facility to assist the state in achieving the implementation of the hierarchy and goals under RSA 149M2 and RSA 149M3. And criteria three, the ability of the proposed facility to assist in achieving the goals of the state's solid waste management plan and one or more solid waste management plans for a district. Finally, we will also evaluate the waiver request. Generally, a waiver request must meet certain specific criteria in the rules in order to be approved. The last piece of the review puzzle is this, the public hearing and comment process. The Department has not made a decision on this application. We are seeking your comments to help us come to a decision on this application for expansion. Once we have received your comments and completed a technical review of the application, including the waiver, we will issue a final decision on the application and waiver request. We have three options. We can deny the application, we can approve the application outright, or we can approve the application with conditions. The solid waste rules identify explicitly the grounds for denial of an application. The rules and the solid waste statute are available online, and if anybody would like, we'd be happy to provide you a link to those. That is a brief overview of the existing facility, the proposed expansion, or the application under review, and the process we use to evaluate it.
Thank you, Jamie. Are there specific questions as to the permitting process that you need Jamie to clarify? Yes, ma'am?
I'm just curious about those regulations that you said we could have a link to. Is that privileged information?
No, no. It's very public.
Okay, so can you give it now?
We can, it's lengthy.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know what else to top my head.
Okay. I'll give you the short version, and then I'm happy to provide the more specific one to you before we leave tonight. But if you go to the state website, which is www.nh.gov, you can navigate from there to state statutes and administrative rules. The administrative rules you are looking for will have the subtitle ENB-SW. So if you can drill down to that, you will find them. But we're happy to provide a more direct link before we leave tonight, if you wish. Are there other questions as to the permitting process? Rita?
When you talk about going through the public benefit, does the DES go through the public benefit, and has the DES been assured that all the parameters of public benefit have been met?
Sure. Could you repeat the question? Because I'm not sure everyone...
I think if I understand the question correctly, you're asking if the Department reviews public benefit during this application review process?
Yes.
Yes, we do, absolutely. Public benefit, we go to the statute, and we go through the requirements as listed in the statute, item by item, and our review summary of the application will include how we decided on those items.
Can you tell me if you found any problem with any of those items?
We have not made a decision on the application.
So that would be until...
That's part of the decision, yep.
Yes, ma'am?
Yes, follow your body is question. There has been several votes in the county of Bethlehem. Is that part of consideration in the public benefit? A count over, basically, several times over several years, and voted that this plan blows, and it was already agreed, and now it's being raised again. Is that part of the public benefit?
The simple answer is no. Public benefit does require the agency to consider the concerns expressed by citizens, so that is in part why we are here tonight. And to the extent that you might want to make that part of your testimony, you are certainly welcome to do so. But the law does not specifically provide for consideration of local vote. That's not one of the criteria. Are there other questions? All right, seeing none, I would ask the applicant to make its presentation. How do you want to, do you want to take that mic? Do you want to...
I guess it's up to the audience. I don't know if everybody can hear me, or if I should use the mic, but I speak pretty loud, so.
You're going to have to turn that on. I think you can.
Okay, so, as I mentioned, my name is Joe Gay. I'm an engineer with Casella, and will walk you through the application. Okay, so, North Country Environmental Services is a subsidiary of Casella Waste Systems. The company was founded in Rutland, Vermont, with a single pickup truck in 1975. Today, the company is 2,300 employees, serving over 200,000 customers and 500,000 households in the Northeast. We are a publicly traded company at CWST. We are a publicly traded company at CWST at NASDAQ. Our operations in the Northeast include the states of Maine, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, New York, Pennsylvania, and Vermont. We are a vertically integrated company providing collection, disposal, recycling, and transfer operations across those states. We also have a professional resource management group that provides resource management to companies also in those states. So more specific to New Hampshire, in the same vertical integration, we have the landfill in Bethlehem that serves disposal needs for the state of New Hampshire. We also have a network of transfer stations located in Newport, Lebanon, Belmont, Allenstown, Monadnock, and Raymond, and hauling divisions in Newport, Salem, and Belmont as well. We directly employ 175 people in the state of New Hampshire with a payroll of about $10 million. We provide solid waste recycling and disposal services for 5,500 businesses in the state of New Hampshire and 50,000 households as well in the state. I want to mention too that the town of Bethlehem receives some benefit from the facility, including free curbside collection for waste and recycling throughout the town, service for the transfer station is free for Bethlehem residents. We also have royalties per ton fifty that the town Bethlehem also gets. All that continues with the expansion of the site. Across the state of New Hampshire, we do service 150 municipalities either directly with disposal. Some of all the waste in these towns highlighted in green are the towns that we provide service for. So about 70% of our waste that we accept at the facility is from New Hampshire, so it originates from the state. Is that number again? Now, specific to the application, this is an overview of the facility. The outline in purple is the limit of where the landfill could be expanded to pursuant to the town of Bethlehem zoning District 5, which is what our limit for expansion is within the town. The shaded area in yellow is the existing footprint of the facility, so that's where the trash exists, is where the line section of the landfill is located. So the next slide depicts the area of what we're here for tonight, which is the 5.71 acre expansion, 1.2 million yards. And that is the area to the south of the facility. So up the page is north, straight up the page is north, so we're looking at an expansion, 100-foot lateral expansion to the south and to the east at the facility. And as you can see, goes up to the limit of District 5 and does not go past that pursuant to the zoning district limits. This slide depicts that same area with the little arrows showing that the flow of the leach aid from the collection system flows into the landfill, and also shows the limitations of the construction area, which is the gray road that you see, and the lighter yellowed area is the limit of where the berm would be constructed to expand the facility. I think this next slide is valuable. So now we're going to cut the landfill in a cross-section from north to the left of the page, south to the right of the page. You can see the existing landfill in green, the soil berm that we would install, which is in the tan color. That's part of what's proposed tonight is our, the expansion. The 100-foot of lateral expansion is this section right here. And the capacity we gain is this darker brown area that goes up the slope and just a little bit onto the top of the landfill. And that equates to the south side and the east side and in total 1.2 million yards, about 2.3 years of capacity. And then this is a blow-up of the liner section on a side slope, and that would be the liner cross-section that we would develop once the berms are built. It, of course, includes the double liner system with a primary liner and a secondary detection liner, consistent with the regulations, and also consistent with all the other liner systems that are there that exist at the facility, with the exception of the stage one, which we've asked for the waiver for, which is in the secondary second collection system. We're asking for a waiver from that.
Is that in your slideshow?
It is not in the slideshow, but I could go back and explain that a little bit.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So the waiver that we're requesting, from the base of the landfill, from this corner all the way over to this corner, in the old stage one area, which was built in the late 80s, early 90s, at the time, the liner system conformed to the rules. Today, that liner system does not conform to the rules, only in the secondary system.
What's that mean?
And so that's, so from the primary liner up, it conforms. So from the primary liner up, it conforms to the rules. The area between the primary and the secondary, which is this area here, in areas of stage one, do not conform to the rules.
But you would expand over that.
So if you look, this brown wedge, if I drew a vertical line from this corner up, there's a very small little corner of trash, if this application is approved, that would be vertically over the stage one area in the non-conforming liner system. But the purpose of the rule is when you put your first five feet of trash out over the base of the liner system, so this happened back in the late 80s and early 90s, if something was to happen with the equipment or some of the trash that goes out over the liner system and it damages the liner system, we want to be able to detect a leak in that liner system very rapidly. So the intent of that rule is when that first layer of trash goes out, something happens, you detect it, you can react to it, repair it, and move on. The reason we asked for a waiver and the reason it was granted for stage four and stage five was because you've got 80 feet of trash over the liner system that's not performing, and there's no threat at this time to that liner. So that's why it was granted.
Is there any guarantee that will be in the future?
I don't think there's any guarantees for anything in life, so. But that liner system, we know is performing. It's been performing for 35 years, and there's been no problems, so we don't perceive any problems going forward. So that's an overview of the application. Does that work?
That's fine. Okay. So are there questions? I see one here, please. Ma'am?
Could you go back one slide, please? You said that from the new construction was 100 feet.
Yep, right there.
So how much is, what is the length on, that's going on top of phase one? If that's to scale, it looks like it's at 400 feet.
This here?
Yes.
So it is to scale, but that's not all stage one. So stage one probably ended like right in here.
Okay.
And from here up to here is stage four, phase two.
Okay.
So this length here, if that's 100 feet, this is probably 200. So probably the first 100 was stage one and the second 100 was stage four, phase two.
Okay, but running your brown line, that means, how long is that long?
Probably 300, 350 feet.
Are there other questions that Joe can answer to clarify the information he provided?
Is that it for the presentation? It's in writing.
We have one question, Rita?
Yeah, we know you know how to go with landfills. I would like to know if you could please fill in the information meeting, see whether you have met the requirements of 149M11.
Rita?
Which is the public benefit. Is that out of order or what? That's what I'd like to hear. In other words, you know you can build landfills, you can successfully landfill business.
Rita, I'm having trouble hearing you.
I'm sorry.
So also are others? I understood you were raising a question again about whether public benefit had been demonstrated?
No, I'd like, I'd like the landfill to explain how they met the requirements of public benefit as opposed to design. That's fine, that was fine. I'm listening to that, I don't know what that really means, but public benefit. Have they, was the long and short-term need for waste generated within the borders of New Hampshire?
Okay.
That's my first question.
All right. The application contains a statement of public benefit. It's several pages in length. It contains many facts, figures, graphs, charts, maps. I would ask that you review that information. It would be extremely time-consuming tonight to repeat all of that, and that will impede taking testimony. But that statement is part of the application. I invite you to review it and comment on it again before the 20th of December.
I'm sorry, I'm asking that that be discussed, not necessarily in pages and pages. What is the bottom line of what they say will be the public benefit? How is that defined? The public benefit is defined as, and how have they met that? Just a simple summary sentence, and I have other questions about that. Public benefit is pivotal to the issuing of a license or expansion or anything. So could I please hear that? Answered by the people looking for landfills. Summary, a summary.
It's a great question, it's an important point to people who have a question about that.
Joe, can you use the mic, please?
So I attempted to sort of summarize the public benefit in these two slides, Rita, and the fact that we have a hauling, transfer, and collection services in the state of New Hampshire. You know, looking at the slide, the next slide, the one in green, it shows 150 towns that we service. You know, we provide collection for, you know, 5,500 businesses and 50,000 households across the state of New Hampshire, meeting the goals of the state of New Hampshire to be able to take care of the state's waste.
So what the goal was, and I have to drop this part because I'm not, I'm not trying to be specific, I don't know. The state has public benefit required. That is determined by how much waste is generated within the borders of New Hampshire. So would you just deal with that and tell us that the state cannot possibly handle with the current facilities other than Casella having another expansion?
So I...
So I'm looking for tonnage and all, and reduced by within the state borders of New Hampshire.
Sure. And I would not be able to give that to you right now. We have it in our application, I can't recite it, I'm sorry, like Pam mentioned, it's pages and pages, charts, a lot of data, I can't recite that right now, but it's there.
Amadi, one figure, what is the waste generated within the state of New Hampshire now, and how is it dealt with by Casella as opposed to the other sources taking care of the waste? How much waste is generated within the state of New Hampshire?
By Casella or by...
No, no, you don't generate it, I hope you take that. Well, you do, actually. Okay, but you do generate, but how much waste generated by the people? That's very clear in our state.
Yeah, I think that would be a good question for the state representatives to answer. I don't, I'd like to say, I don't have that on the top of my head, I don't know it.
I think...
I wouldn't, I'd be lying if that's a question.
All right.
I don't know.
For the benefit of everyone here, the state recently published a biennial report. It is available, again, online. It provides some of the facts and figures that Rita is requesting. The application contains a detailed statement of public benefit by the applicant, and that statement is under review by the state at this time. No determination has been made as to the adequacy of that. That is, again, a purpose tonight is to receive testimony as to the public's concerns relative to that public benefit statement. I'm going to move on from that question so that we can get to the testimony part. I see one...
I'm sorry, I object to that. I'm asking what is, would you just, short and long-term need for waste generated within the borders of New Hampshire? That is determined by the state, by the department. Could you please just give me a figure? What is the long and short-term need for taking care of the waste generated within the borders of New Hampshire? Ms. Jorge Jensen, could you please tell me? Or can anybody, can Mike tell me? Can Jamie tell me or Debbie tell me?
That information, this is on, right? That information is contained in the biennial solid waste report available on the DES website. I would suggest you take a look. I do not have those numbers off the top of my head. There's a graph. It involves many calculations to determine the generation of solid waste in the state, many assumptions, and many calculations, and it is summarized in the biennial report available on the DES website.
Which says what?
I just, I gave you my answer.
Sorry, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Sir, you have a question?
I'm just wondering about the presentation. There's another variance on monitor wells, is that correct, that I saw?
Another variance? I'm not understanding the question.
A waiver or variance in the application, the stage six?
Yes.
Something about test wells, monitoring wells?
Leak detection and location system as specified in ENB-SW-805.07.
I was just wondering if...
That's the request for waiver that you're referring to.
Can Mr. Gay go over that in terms of his presentation?
He did, actually, he touched on it. So when he was talking about the primary liner and the secondary liner, so a solid waste landfill in New Hampshire is required to have a primary liner, which is on top, and it's the liner most close to the waste. The waste sits on top of that primary liner. Below the primary liner is a secondary liner, so it's a second liner that goes underneath this first liner, so it's separated even further from the waste, and it's a backup system. It's called the secondary, and it's also sometimes referred to as the leak detection and location system. So that's what that secondary liner is about. So the waiver is relative to that.
Thank you.
Sir?
Go back to the cross-section we talked before that. My understanding is that NCES basically got a letter from DES that there was, I don't know if it was just one of the test wells, the Valvoline testing wells, or more than one, of a contingent, no contingent. Can you tell us, show us where in relation to this map that came from? Which well, where was the well? What stages?
It's not coming, while it's in groundwater around the land, it'll not come in from a specific stage. You can believe it's coming on the line, it pre-existed the line.
All right.
So was it in one testing area or was it numerous?
I believe it. I'm not sure which...
Joe, can you use the mic? We are not able to hear either one of you. In addition, I'll allow the question, certainly, we'll try to clarify it, but I'm going to bring us back to this solid waste application. I want to be clear that, as I said earlier, there are other permits specifically... I want to be clear that, as I said earlier, there are other permits this facility needs. One of them is a groundwater management permit or monitoring permit. And the issues you're raising are relevant to that permit, but certainly, Joe, if you would like to address the question.
So there are some residual contamination, I'm kind of going off the page, but it's to the left of the landfill, to the north, that I believe you might be referring to some detections in some of the monitoring wells. So it's to that side of the landfill?
Joe, go to one of your layouts, one of your aerials.
So up in here, I believe, is, from what I'm gathering from what you're asking, is up in this area up in here. The exist, the old online landfill was in this area here at the facility. Yeah, those years reflect the line area, when those areas were built. The online landfill existed in the 70s and 80s and was in this area here. It was actually excavated, removed and placed into the stage one area here in 92 and 93.
Okay, thank you. And I have another question for you, please, up here. In terms of the application for this, again, the public benefit question, is that public benefit in terms of the state or is that in terms of the host community? And if it is in terms of the state, have all the other places in the state had an opportunity to have a meeting like this where they can give their testimony about the public benefit or lack thereof to them?
So the question, if I understand correctly, is, is public benefit determined relative to the host municipality or is it determined relative to the whole state? Is that the question?
That's part one.
Okay. Public benefit is detailed in the law, RSA 149M, and it is about the state as a whole.
So have there been other evenings, other meetings like this tonight in other areas of the state addressing this particular application and the relevance of the public benefit of this project to those other areas of the state?
There have not. This meeting is open to all public of the state, well, I would say all the public. This is a public meeting. You do not have to be from the host municipality to attend and give testimony at this hearing. This is for the state.
Has the rest of the state been notified of the meeting here tonight?
Public notice, yes. Public notice was posted in the Caledonian, the Littleton Courier, as Pam mentioned. It was posted on the DES website. It was sent out through the municipal Ecolink twice. And so, and public notice was made specifically also to abutters of the facility. So public notice has been made as the rules and the solid waste rules dictate.
I ask for a, so, does anybody get here from more than, I don't know, 15, 20 miles away?
We have one more question.
Just in response to Mark's question about thinking of the map that you had put out, about where the gravel pits are, where the gravel pits are. There's also on that map, where the gravel pit is, because there's one, I guess it's like there's one second to stage two, stage three.
Joe, can you point out where the gravel pit is on that diagram?
Oh, yeah.
So that wouldn't be anywhere near where the old landfill was supposed to be located?
Well, the old gravel pit was up in here. The new gravel pit is over here.
Right, so we know where it says stage four, then there's that number one, and then another R and R, where it's at there. And then there was one over there, last, I think, from the judge there.
So we, we have representatives here that are familiar with the groundwater condition facility, they can speak in detail, both the DES and our own. So questions come up, I think we're prepared to answer them.
All right. Again, I would like to move into the testimony part of this and not get off track, off center from this application. Let me take this lady's question, please.
Very easy question. You say 70% of the mature going into landfill now is from Bethlehem?
Uh, no ma'am, 70% is from around the state of New Hampshire.
Around the state of New Hampshire, I'm sorry. Where's the other 30%?
Uh, some from Massachusetts and some from Maine.
We're coming on to 7:00 PM and again, I would like to move on to the testimony part of the hearing. And so everyone who wants to speak has an opportunity to do so. As I said earlier, I'm going to call people to speak in the order in which I received the testimony cards. Based on the number of cards that I have, I'm going to allot five minutes per speaker. Deborah Sanderegger will be our timekeeper. She'll give you a one minute warning with a yellow card. When she holds up the yellow card, you've got one minute. When you see that, please start wrapping up your testimony so that you'll be able to gracefully conclude and yield the floor to the next speaker when your time is actually up. Again, our objective this evening is to give everyone who wishes to speak a reasonable opportunity to do so. If your testimony will not fit inside the allotted time, you are welcome to resume during a subsequent round of testimony. I will keep cycling through the cards. While the focus of this part of the hearing is for us to hear your testimony and comments on the application, we understand that some of you will have questions for us. We will attempt to answer those questions tonight if we have the information available and can do so briefly. I do caution, however, that we're not able to debate the merits of the application. The agency will evaluate the application only after it completes its ongoing technical review, and that's going to include all of the comments and questions that you raise here tonight on the record. And for that reason, again, all of your questions, whether we answer them tonight or not, will be treated as public comment and we will consider them during our continuing technical review process. Let me go back over the speaking protocol. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium, adjust the microphone and use it so everybody can hear your testimony, including ourselves. Please face us, it helps us to hear. And again, I can't overemphasize, we really are here to listen to what you're saying and I want that to be the focus. If you have difficulty getting to the microphone, just let me know when I call your name and we'll make an appropriate accommodation. If you can't stand at the microphone but you can come to it, we will get you in a seated position so that you're comfortable for your five minutes. Are there any questions again about the procedures?
Yes, but you please explain why we're having, I heard you say it, but I'm not sure, what we cannot talk about and what we can ask questions about. Is there a dividing line somewhere?
We're here this evening to take testimony on this particular application. You can-
From the public, is that it?
Pardon?
From the public?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So if the public is in hand, is that testimony limited only to those issues that you want to hear about or how do you limit that?
You can spend your five minutes talking-
I'm not talking about time, I'm talking about subject.
We're here to take testimony, comments on this particular application. And I would encourage you to do so on this particular application. I can't put boundaries on that for you. It would be difficult for us to process comments on something that was not relevant to this application, but we would certainly try to get answers for you at another time if you have questions that are not particular to this application.
As long as it's relevant to the application.
That is most helpful to us, yes. All right. So shall we get going?
Please.
Great, it's 7 o'clock. I'm going to take these in the order that I received them and our first speaker is Jeanie Probelar.
Thank you. I'm going to have to skedaddle right after this. I have another engagement. So, NC, oh, my. NCS's standard permit number DES SW SP 03002. I have lived with this permit for so long in my life, I feel like I should have it tattooed on my arm. It has affected me that much. As I prepared for tonight's hearing, I asked myself, how many times have I stood in a public hearing or before the legislature to request that the DES intervene in the never-ending expansion of the NCS landfill under this permit? How many times have I, along with countless others in the room tonight, asked the DES to stop permitting the facility that enables Casella waste systems to dump millions of tons of trash, much of it from out of state, in the small rural New Hampshire community of Bethlehem? Answer, way too many to count. What I have to say to you tonight is no different from other testimony I have presented to you before. I am simply entering a sampling of past testimonies into the record tonight because the issues have not changed. I've highlighted the most interesting parts for you. It's been over 25 years and the issues haven't changed. All of us here tonight have been voicing the same concerns since the 1990s. Noise, odor, contaminated test wells, contamination detected in the Ammanusick River, documented cancer clusters, leachate spills, safety issues, and a long and storied list of operational permit violations on the part of NCS. Honestly, I have stood here so many times as both a private citizen and as a Bethlehem select board member that I regard these public hearings as little more than a charade. Sorry, that's the truth. Because I know the outcome. You'll listen, nod your heads, and tomorrow there will be a letter of response in the mail that clearly does not offer any meaningful solutions or address any of the concerns that have been raised in public hearings such as this over and over again, year after year, for 25-plus years. Standard permit number DES SW SP 03002. Back in 2010, I reminded the DES that in 2003, the incumbent administration knowingly issued a permit for expansion to NCS that was erroneous and contrary to RSA 149M. NCS did not have local approval and the DES knew it. I cited the legal judgment that precluded the DES from issuing the permit for expansion. I also cited the statute that gave the DES the authority to suspend that permit or revoke it in its entirety. I asked the DES to right the great wrong it perpetrated on the town of Bethlehem so long ago. That has always been my ask. Every permit application holds the potential for the DES to right its wrongs. Perhaps one day the DES will shock me by exercising that statutory authority, but truthfully, I'm not holding my breath. Now it's 2019 and NCS's latest monitoring test well results reveal elevated levels of PFAS and suspected carcinogen 1-4 dioxane. Elevated levels of 1-4 dioxane have also been detected in water quality tests of the Ammanusick River, a watershed with protected status. Protected status. With so much focus on PFAs in the Merrimack River, I would think the current administration at DES would be very concerned about how they handle NCS's current expansion request in light of the PFAS detection. It is well known that capping and closing the landfill significantly reduces the leachate it generates. Less leachate equals less PFAS and other contaminants and carcinogens from entering the environment, either via line of failure or a direct discharge from treatment at wastewater facilities. I imagine as you drive home tonight, you may ask yourself, do I want to be the DES administration that allowed documented PFAS contamination to continue unchecked at the NCS landfill by permitting it into infinity? Well, do you? And just because, I'll leave you tonight with a earworm for your trip back south as you contemplate doing what is right versus doing what is easy. You ready? I hope this lasts with you through your ride. This is the dump that never ends. Yes, it goes on and on, my friends. Somebody gave it a permit not knowing what it was. Please don't keep approving it forever just because this is a dump that never ends. Yes, it goes on and on, my friends. Somebody gave it a permit not knowing what it was. Please don't keep approving it forever just because. Thank you. May I approach the bench with my written testimony and leave it? Does it have to be emailed?
Could you turn it in to Tyler? He will stamp it in for you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Martin Glavak. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're not on a first name basis yet. Good evening. Thank you for coming. Can you hear me all right?
I can, yes.
Okay. Well, I wasn't expected to be second, the second speaker. I wasn't expected to be the second speaker, but thank you all for coming tonight and I don't know if I'll be able to follow up an elegant speech like Jeanie's, but I'm speaking tonight in favor of the proposed stage six landfill expansion. My story is all different than Jeanie's. I have lived in Bethlehem for the last 12 years and my experience with the landfill in Bethlehem is the complete opposite from Jeanie's. I have seen them as being good neighbors to town. I too have served as a selectman for six years, seven years. And I've been impressed by NCS. I've also been impressed by the opposition, which has been around for 25-plus years. And I don't doubt that they tend, that their intentions are, that the opposition is well intentioned and that they mean well to protect the environment just as we all do. I'm sure that's your main objective as well. What I see here tonight is a celebration of the environmental activism that has brought us to DES and the regulation and the regulating landfills, the line landfills, which are different than online landfills that we have all around the state. I have crossed out this next paragraph, but I will, I'll read it anyway. What we also see tonight, though, is the perpetuation of the myths that have been going on in Bethlehem for 25 years, I guess I have been witnessing for 12 years. And I also have your response to public comment from 2014 that addresses a lot of allegations that Jeanie has brought up. Anything from the permitting process, impact to surrounding areas, landfill failure, air quality impacts, public benefits and recycling, groundwater protection, Ammanusick River, and out of state waste. This is all in here from 2014. It's also an available document. And briefly, I want to touch base, I want to touch on a few reasons why I'm in favor of this and hopeful future expansions of the landfill in Shuler Road. of the landfill on Truder Road. As we all know, Bethlehem entered into a new coast community agreement in 2012, and since that time, Bethlehem is the only rural town in New Hampshire that has townwide trash cleanup. And that exists for anywhere from Main Street to the last house on the dead-end country road. Not every rural community in Bethlehem has that, and I think that's a huge benefit for Bethlehem. That same coast community agreement has provided Bethlehem with significant financial contributions to account with revenues, which helped reduce taxes every year since 2012. Prior to that, it was a different story. And interestingly, prior to 2012, I've lived in town for about five years up until that point, there hasn't been any mention of coast community agreement or contributions to account of the town that's usually been paying money out on legal fees. And the last thing I want to talk about is about you, the DES, the regulators. I think you go to work every day, trying to do your job, trying to regulate your permit. And I do want to address the myths that happened in 2014. Anything, like I said, from permitting, the first thing it says in 2014 is that you're not objective. Explain how that worked, why you aren't objective. You explain why the original landfill is okay to be ceded where it is and why it's okay to be there now. But the one thing I really want to talk about is a three-page or four-page explanation about the aquifer. And that's towards the end of this report, which is also public.
About the what? It's good to hear.
It's about the aquifer.
Thank you.
There's a three-page explanation of this 2014 response to public comment. And I think I want to thank you for explaining that. So there's a big difference between myths that have been created in the last 25 years and the reality. And I think that there's not... You can say nothing, Casella can say nothing, some of us that are in favor of this situation can say tonight to change the landfill opponents about the landfill on Truder Road. But you can regulate landfills, you can regulate this landfill, the one in Carberry, the one in Rochester. So you can regulate everybody, you can regulate all the landfills except for this one. And I trust you with doing that. And the important... The most important part, I think, for this is for you to keep continuing... For you to keep regulating the landfill. And it's important for Bethlehem because the financial benefits are significant. I hope that you can approve this before the end of the year because Bethlehem can benefit in 2019. If it's postponed to 2019, we don't see the benefit, the increased benefit until 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Swan.
Hi, thank you very much. Welcome to the North Country. It's beautiful up here, isn't it? I don't know if we really need another landfill on top of the one in Bethlehem, but we in Dalton do not want to see another landfill in the North Country. I'm John Swan, founder of Safe Forest Lake. I am new to this battle. In Bethlehem, I do apologize for not being there for you before. We moved here five years ago and wasn't on my radar until Casella decided to look to Dalton, a small rural town with no zoning, as its next space for expansion once, hopefully for Bethlehem, they finally leave. I'm hoping, and it's Christmas season, so I'm hoping that Santa will deliver this, but I'm asking Santa to close the Bethlehem facility in April of 2020, I believe. And so I'm asking Santa for that, and I'll get back to that. Again, my introduction to Casella is in Dalton, and a lot of folks in Dalton and Whitefield now have... They side with me, and I know a lot of them agree with me because we talk about it pretty much every day. I'm not going to get into much other than... I know, Jamie and Pamela, you've talked about the rules and the fact that you're looking for all information required by the rules. And you mentioned the fact that permission to expand its existing landfill is being sought. So permission, rules. I'm going to talk to Mike Wimsat, the Director of Waste Management's letter to Casella, NCS. I don't know how many of you have seen this, and it's on our Facebook page, we posted it, but it's from October 18th, 2019. And this is Director Mike Wimsat's letter to NCS. And so, since we're talking about rules, we're talking about public benefit. This is Mike Wimsat's letter to NCS, and this is why I think Santa... I'm asking Santa for April 2020 as a gift. But Mike Wimsat writes to NCS that this is a notice of findings, and it's relative to landfill capacity. And it talks about NCS's 2018 annual facility report. So this is NCS's data to DES. And Mr. Wimsat is talking about the purpose of the review is to determine NCS's compliance status relative to the facility's minimum permitted operating life, which is a component of its public benefit requirement. This is for the stage five permit. So right now, we're talking about stage five relative to seeking permission from DES for stage six. And this is a letter from October where NCS is not in compliance according to DES interpreting NCS's data about its own landfill. And I will continue... I won't read the whole thing because I know people want to go home, but it talks about a compliance deficiency and certain environmental statutes are quoted, but the condition 13A states that the permittee shall operate stage five in a manner that provides 5.3 or more years of disposal capacity for New Hampshire solid waste generators. And I'll skip down to the permittee shall control the capacity depletion rate so as to fulfill the 5.3-year requirement in good faith. And so, Mr. Wimsat continues, it says, "Operations began in stage five on December 28th, 2015, as disstated by NCS in its facility monthly report from 2016. As such, stage five must remain operational at non-toking capacity levels through April 16th, 2021. However," Mr. Wimsat goes on, "NCS, in their 2018 annual facility report, blah, 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 as such, the reported end date of facility operations is December 31st, 2020, approximately four months short of the minimum permitted operating life." So right there, noncompliance. But it gets better. New Hampshire DES projects that at the... Well, I'll back up. You conducted your own analysis of the facility, and you project that at the current average daily waste received, stage five of the facility will run out of operational capacity on or before April 29th, 2020. About one year short of the minimum permitted operating life. So again, I hope Santa delivers. I would like to see you deny this permit. But if they can't follow the rules for stage five, why would you grant them permission for stage six? And again, Mr. John Gay, Joe Gay cites 70% of New Hampshire waste going into the facility. The statistics for 2018 are actually more like 64%. So they do play fast and loose with the facts, as we saw in Dalton. We don't want them in Dalton. Obviously, the good people of Bethlehem don't want them here anymore. It's time to close this facility, and I think April 2020 sounds really good. Please, Santa, I believe.
I'm slipping in my responsibilities here because I told all of you at the beginning that you needed to state your name and address. I want to confirm, John, that... John Swan, 25 Cashman Road, Dalton.
That's correct. The thriving metropolis of Dalton, New Hampshire.
Thank you.
Which now has emergency temporary zoning.
And I will read into the record because I slipped a gear. Jeanie Robillard was 87 Jefferson Street, Bethlehem. Martin Glavak, 1309 Cherry Valley Road, Bethlehem. Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrea Bryant. Andrea, could you state your name and address?
I'm Andrea Bryant. I'm a private citizen of Bethlehem. I live at 633 Swayze Lane, 65. Thank you for coming. Margaret Mead said, "We won't have society if we destroy the environment," and that is the reason why Bethlehem has been torn apart for almost three decades. Our small town has been plagued with the constant legal battles because of continuous massive expansion of the NCS landfill. North Country Environmental Service is already polluting the environment and has been noncompliant with the DES permit and regulations many times over the years. NCS landfill should not be granted a new permit to increase its size since it's already failing. I'm here to ask you, amongst other things, to follow the statement of purpose in 149M, quote, "It is the declared purpose of the General Court to protect human health, to preserve the natural environment, and to conserve precious and dwindling natural resources through the proper and integrated management of solid waste." One extremely important reason that the landfill needs to be stopped from expanding is its risks to health and well-being of those living near the landfill because they're real. And I'm one of those people that live about a mile and a half from there. Putrid odors and intrusive noises invade our homes, businesses, and yards. It's not just the neighborhood. Landfill odors are detectable at many locations. The nauseating odors are a combination of the stench from garbage, sludge, and the rotten egg scent that comes from the greenhouse gases being released. Many residents, as well as tourists, have been offended by these odors as they drive past NCS. Of course, NCS denies odor and noise complaints. Here's an example of how NCS is not being forthright in those denials. This fall, I contacted NCS and DES with an extreme noise complaint. I hear it regularly, but sometimes it's just really bad. It wakes me up with closed windows. I received a message from the landfill manager that said there's no way I was hearing loud noise. It was a DES representative who informed me that the reason the landfill had been extremely loud was because NCS was actively capping the section of the landfill that was facing my home. A drive-by showed a bulldozer going up and down the side of the landfill, and that was what was responsible for the constant beeping and loud grinding sound that had been disturbing my sleep and outside activities for days. It seems that if NCS cannot be upfront and honest with this type of information, one has to wonder, what else do they deny? Present... Continuing on, presently, a lawsuit has been filed by the National Environmental Law Center on behalf of Toxic Action and Conservation Law Foundation, challenging the drainage channel that is flowing directly into the Amunucic as a violation of the Federal Clean Water Act. DES has a ruling that if the court concurs with prohibit expansion, DES should hold off considering this permit until the court rules on whether or not the toxic seep is a violation of Clean Water Act. New Hampshire RSA 149M, colon, 12, criteria for approval, suspension, and verification... Section 1, the Department, I'm quoting, "The Department shall approve an application for a permit only if it's determined that the facility or activity for which the permit is sought will," in paragraph C, says, "comply with federal and state air and water pollution statutes, regulations, and rules." How can DES approve a permit that is uncertain... of the uncertainty of the possibility of a federal law? Has DES actually invested the drainage channel recently? Furthermore, water contamination is a major concern for this landfill. Water tests have for years shown dangerous levels of toxins such as the cancer-causing compound 1-4-dioxin and arsenic. The most recent test by Sandboard and Head proves elevated toxins in the test wells. This further jeopardizes the protected Amunucic River and the stratified drift aquifer underneath. There are many cones with wells tapped into those same aquifer. The U.S. EPA says all liners will eventually leak. Allowing more trash to be piled on top of an already faulty system with the risk of major contamination is not acceptable, especially since RSA 149M, colon, 6, for paragraph B, says, "It is DES's responsibility to investigate any condition which it believes to be in violation or presents a substantial threat to human health or the environment." How long will it be before Bethlehem finds itself in the same predicament with the contaminated wells as Southbridge, Massachusetts? And I've got more, so I'll have to come back.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Virginia Jeffries.
All pass until my screen is...
Wendy Whitten.
Hi, I'm Wendy Whitten. I live on Maple Street in Bethlehem at 215. I've lived here for 45 of my 50 years, and three of our four grandchildren are still in the area. I have a lot to say that I'll probably submit in writing, but the basic thing I want to know is why are the out-of-state disposal needs the responsibility of the state of New Hampshire, especially when out-of-state trash is taken in at a cheaper rate than what in-state pays? The reason they're asking for another expansion so soon is because they fill too quickly. Again, why is that our responsibility? You state that there needs to be a public benefit for New Hampshire residents, and I don't really understand why a private corporation making a profit by taking out-of-state waste... We have very clearly expressed our wishes for the landfill to close, years and years and years of voting, and those have been just repeatedly disregarded as they try again to find another loophole. And they keep saying that our free curbside pickup is this great thing, that most other towns do not have that, but they seem to manage okay, and I know that we will also be fine. Just in closing, I just want to know, is DES going to be here for us in the future, whenever that is that the landfill is closed and those liners eventually leak? Is New Hampshire DES going to help us clean up that mess? And will they be held responsible for these decisions? That's it.
Thank you. Sarah Dusset.
I live at 58 New World Lane in Whitefield. I actually live across Forest Lake from the proposed Dalton site for the landfill. I grew up in Littleton, I have family in Bethlehem, and I thank you for being here tonight to listen to us. Casella's presence in NCS is a regional concern now more than ever with the proposal for expansion, not only in Bethlehem but in Dalton. Everyone who churches in our area is called to the stewardship of our land and our air and our water. And from what we hear tonight, it is clear that there have been countless disappointments in 25-plus years of landfill operation. in twenty-five-plus years of landfill operation in Bethlehem. As people living with the NCS facility in our backyard, it's up to us to speak for our environmental health and community values, and we must depend on you at DES to listen and to step up for us. You are our gatekeepers in the face of corporate wealth and power and willfulness that is an intimidating force in these small New Hampshire towns. So I have a question for you. I wish I had read your rules for denying this permit. And what I wonder is if they include past performance and credibility? And maybe you can't answer that in this moment. But, I mean, I do a lot of reading about this landfill, and I have so many things I wonder about, like the test well numbers that just came out on this B three oh four U R well in the former Unline'd area shows the highest one-four dioxin level ever recorded there. And John Day's comment was that these levels of one-four dioxin were sporadic and low level, but they've been elevated above the current acceptable level for the last five readings. So, I mean, does that mean the previous removal of the old landfill was not properly done? Is the water there changing for the worse? What are the next steps there? And in the other wells where there are elevated readings? I mean, it seems like there's a lot of monitoring, but when does something actually happen to address these things? I know that Mr. Ormore of your Waste Management Division said it was going to be important to track the impacts closely, but at what point does something remedial happen to address that contaminated water and why it continues to rise in its toxin readings, as it seems to? And what would restorative action be then? And what does DES think about the continuing seep into the Amunucic River? As supposedly it was remedied almost a decade ago. But within a year, it reverted to its original unacceptable state and channeled pollutants again into the river. I mean, does that seep somehow become acceptable? Or did it become acceptable in the success story that the Casella team reports it to be? I mean, if DES required it to be cleaned up once, why was there not follow-through? Why did cleanup fail? And does DES agree with the National Environmental Law Center's lawsuit asserting violation of the Federal Clean Water Act here? And, I mean, I read today that that's the responsibility of EPA to enforce, but I wonder what your position is on that. And then, you know, how do we have confidence in a company that tells us repeatedly that they're proud of their work, but they allow exposed waste faces in an area that hasn't been worked actively for a month? How hard is that to monitor and address? Does it really require retraining, as was suggested in the NCS response to the notice of that violation of uncovered faces? I mean, one has to think maybe a new level of corporate commitment to following the most basic rules is what's needed with dedicated managerial oversight. And, I mean, lastly, I wonder, is it enough to tell residents who are gagging in their own backyards from landfill owners that the company's meeting the industry odor standards? I mean, how helpful is that? Maybe the standards are not high enough. In closing, I mean, my question really is, in making this decision about this permit, do you look at the record of NCS in Bethlehem? Does that mean I'm done? No. Let's not allow any further expansion for a company that's not honoring some of the most basic rules for landfilling. Let's acknowledge there are other options in the state to handle the New Hampshire trash that's going to Bethlehem. Let's look elsewhere for solid waste management. If landfills are necessary... I'm sorry. Truly, landfills are not a sustainable system of waste disposal, and that needs to be addressed broadly in the state and society as the legislators just acknowledged. But economic expedience should not be the gold standard for waste disposal. That makes communities lazy about reducing waste. Trash disposal is massively expensive if we include the cost of selling out our precious environment and health. That, too, to come.
I don't know if you've almost finished, or...
Yeah, I'm almost finished.
Okay.
If landfills are necessary as an interim measure, Northern New Hampshire has done its part already in terms of the sacrifices endured and the ongoing assault toward land in our waters. Let's be a trash exporter that is still as hesitant to adopt zero-waste measures in our communities and keep responsibility for trash close to home, as everyone should do. I ask DES to step up to its highest standards and mandates and end Casella's tenure in New Hampshire. Let the company take its considerable treasure from almost thirty years here and leave us the financial resources and commitment to forever monitor and remediate what they have created. Please deny this expansion request and any further development by Casella in New Hampshire based on Bethlehem's experience. Let's protect our backyard, which, as we all know, is the beloved backyard for the whole state.
Thank you, Sarah. Are you submitting that in writing?
Um, it's not ready, but I will submit it.
Okay. Thank you. Our next speaker is Brian Cook.
Uh, Brian. Brian Cook, thirty-seven sixty-eight Main Street, Bethlehem. I live in the proximity of the landfill. It's on the other side of the Amunucic River, so, like... But you've heard from other people already. I smell the smells. We smell the smells. We hear the noise. Yeah, we have a beautiful Amunucic there to enjoy, which... Anyways, I don't really have a written presentation, but I do just want to talk a little bit. I do have some concerns. You know, you already know the history of Bethlehem residents versus the landfill. In two thousand twelve, I think the residents felt that there was an agreement between the town and the landfill that there was a decision made on the height of, that the maximum height of the landfill was going to be. It's footprint. There was an agreement that there would be no land purchased for the purpose of expansion. And yet, expansion outside of the district. And yet, land was purchased. There was an active campaign in the form of warrant articles to extend the landfill into that land, which the town voted down. But as a result of that land purchase, we have this expansion waiver for you now. Because of that land purchase, they're looking to push their border right up to the border of the property, saying that they don't need that buffer anymore. So, maybe literally it doesn't violate the agreement, but I think there are some of us in town that feel that the intent was, this is in violation of what the town had hoped for, that there wouldn't be no further expansion in that neighborhood one day. Two thousand twenty-one was the date that the landfill would be capped, and that would be... So, I really want you to take into consideration that this expansion is because of that land purchase, and there was not the original intent of what was agreed by two thousand twelve.
Thank you. Julie Sealy.
Hi, Julie Sealy. And I live at fifty-seven Blaney Road. Uh, it should be a slide somewhere.
At the top.
It's at the bottom. Okay?
Okay?
Better. Thank you. I live at fifty-seven Blaney Road in Bethlehem. Although, if you have my card, you'll see I have a grand Tony FBO box for work convenience. I'm going to focus on what jumped out at me when I reviewed this permit application, and it's related to public benefit also. As you're well aware, the New Hampshire Legislature recently appointed a committee to study solid waste issues in New Hampshire. The committee found, among other things, that more than half of New Hampshire's disposal capacity an exceedingly valuable state resource whose longevity should be preserved through any means feasible, including waste reduction, recycling, composting, and parsimonious granting of permits, is consumed by other states each year. New Hampshire actually imports more waste than we ourselves dispose of in New Hampshire and export very little in comparison. This has got to be curbed. Unfortunately, the Interstate Commerce Clause doesn't allow us to simply stock the trucks at the border. Casella could make that call on their own if they were truly looking out for New Hampshire's best interests. But DES can't force the issue. I get that. But DES does have the power to say yea or nay to expansions that clearly are designed merely to increase a company's ability to import waste. In NCS's last permit application in two thousand fourteen or so, NCS estimated that they would be taking approximately two hundred and eighty thousand tons per year. In the magical math that seems to grace New Hampshire landfills, that number has actually been much higher, one year even exceeding four hundred thousand tons. But notably, during none of those years, did Casella accept anywhere close to two hundred and eighty thousand tons of in-state New Hampshire waste. And tangentially, in a slap in the face to New Hampshire towns, Casella officials have acknowledged to Bethlehem that they charge New Hampshire towns a higher tipping fee per ton than they charge Massachusetts towns. Nice public benefit, huh? So, in this permit application, a reasonable person would think that since two hundred and eighty thousand tons was more than enough to accommodate the volume of New Hampshire waste taken by the company during recent years, that number should stay static. But no, Casella has actually requested a forty-three percent increase to four hundred thousand tons per year. Since they're not even taking their currently permitted two hundred and eighty thousand tons in in-state waste, one can only surmise that the increase is designed only to accommodate more out-of-state waste, especially given that the largest landfill in Massachusetts, which coincidentally was run by Casella, was closed within the past year. I will note that I asked Kevin Roy several times in social media interactions exactly why it was that NCS wanted such an enormous increase. You're probably not surprised to learn as an active Bethlehem Facebook group on which these issues are discussed, when they only took two hundred and thirty-one thousand tons of New Hampshire waste in two thousand eighteen and are on a similar pace this year. But every time I ask, he left the conversation. Assuming that the permit application passes muster in other areas, if DES has the ability to grant this permit with a different, longer timeframe than NCS requested, DES should do so, returning to the two hundred and eighty thousand ton per year calculation. If DES does not have that ability, then this permit should be denied for that reason alone. I would say that even the expansion proponents in this room who live in Bethlehem should agree with that because rather than getting two-point-three years of property taxes, you would get four years of property taxes declining more slowly. The final thing I'd like to ask on the same topic is hypothetically, if Casella had come in here asking, saying, "We're going to take two million tons, and we're going to make it last one-point-three years," I would have to imagine the DES would be saying, "No, that's not okay. That's excessive to go from two hundred and eighty to, you know, whatever that amounts to, one-point-one-and-a-half million a year." So clearly, DES has the ability to take that into account. I would suggest that that number should be looked at as based on what the public benefit has been provided, which is what they are taking now in New Hampshire waste. I do have some other questions. But I will come back around.
Thank you. Dick Robey.
I am Dick Robey. I live at fifty-nine Strawberry Hill. And I signed this card because I know my blood pressure will drop when I hear some of the same stories that I've heard for thirty years. I'm kind of an unusual guy in Bethlehem. I didn't have to move here to get in this fight. I was born here. And my father was born here. And when you're sixteen years old, you think your father has some crazy ideas. But my father loved Bethlehem. Really did. And all of a sudden, here I am in Andy, and my father knew a lot more than I give him credit for because I love Bethlehem. My grandkids are here. But the thing that bothers me the most is I do some town business. And we can sit here and we can tell the same old stories, but there's a lot of people in this town struggling to keep up with their taxes and keep their homes. I would never get into an argument about the landfill, but I'm not an expert. We've heard them all tonight. They're all here. But I'm not one of them. But I do believe that Bethlehem, with the struggles they're having, I've had to listen to people that can't pay their water bill. We've made deals from the village district, which runs the water. We've made deals so people could keep their water. But it's a tough job to look people in the eye that you know and have to hear their sicknesses and their problems they have. So we can be... We can all be experts, but we're asking our biggest taxpayer to go away. And our biggest taxpayer wants an expansion. If at the end of that they go away, then I'll continue my battle the best that I can after that. But the expansion, you talk about public benefit. Bethlehem's the fourth-largest town in the state of New Hampshire. Look it up. A lot of people in this town will tell you it's number two. It's not. It's four. And I can name the other three. But you take your totes, and you take those totes to the furthest part of Bethlehem with your garbage, and Casella goes and picks them up. That is not something to poo-poo about. That's something that's going to cost all of us a lot of money when that goes away. I hear about the river. The water, when it leaves the sewage treatment plant in Bethlehem, travels down the Amunucic to Littleton. We have to make sure that water, when it leaves, is in a condition to get to the river. And at this moment, right now, it is. I hope it continues to stay that way. But we all know we can't predict the future. It travels to Littleton. And Littleton has that water in the Amunucic, and they have to make sure that it's all right to make its trip to Lisbon. And from Lisbon, it travels on down. Eventually, it gets to the... I'll go through the whole thing if you want. I'll get it to the Atlantic Ocean before I get done. But it does. We get no complaints about the water that Bethlehem is putting in there. So some of the talk that I've heard about the river, there are people that look after it, and you're some of them. So I, without writing all the things down, not being able to sing, those are my feelings. And I think someday, when the landfills are here, and a lot of people who have heard me run my mouth about how much... The town of Bethlehem says yes to every warrant article and every article that they have. How many times I've fought those articles? Officially, I'm going to win because without the landfill, you're not going to be able to afford to say yes to everything that you want in this town. So think it over.
Rita Farrell.
Rita Farrell?
Would I divert to later, please?
Gail Robinson?
I'm going to send written testimony.
I'm sorry, you said you're submitting written testimony? Rebecca Brown? All right. We've made it through round one. So going to go back through. Jeanie Robelard left. That's correct. Martin Levak? Do you want a second opportunity?
No.
He left? All right. John Swan? You're good.
I had left off talking about RSA 149, our responsibility to investigate any condition which is believed to be a violation. And so continuing, I'm saying, speaking of investigating, when was the last time the DES had a survey or checked the height of the landfill? Do you know if NCS is at or above the height specified in their permit? The landfill is definitely higher and higher. It rises well above tree line. With all their other violations, it's NCS's duty to be sure that this is not another area where NCS is violating its conditions before even considering to allow another expansion. Another area that needs investigating is NCS's recycling rate. New Hampshire's RSA 149M: Waste Reduction Goal, paragraph 1. The General Court declares its concern that there are environmental and economic issues pertaining to the disposal of solid waste landfills and incinerators. It is important to reserve landfill and incinerator capacity for solid waste which cannot be reduced or reused, recycled, or composted. The General Court declares that the state, the goal for the state by the year 2000 is achieve a 40% minimum weight diversion of solid waste landfill or incinerator on a per-capita basis. Question is, NCS doesn't require haulers to be free of recyclables like Mount Carberry, and it's rumored around Bethlehem, though I don't know for sure, that our recycling is just dumped into the landfill. Do you have proof that Bethlehem's recycling is sent to a zero-sort recycling plant? Do you know the exact figures? If NCS is actually helping New Hampshire reach its 40% recycling goal, that's actually 19 years old. Also, NCS is not compliant with 149M and their permit because they have been fast-filling and therefore will not meet the requirements set forth in their operating permit for public benefit of New Hampshire, which has already been addressed. But this is unacceptable, and they should not be rewarded with a new permit. This brings me, however, to a red flag, because as I was going through, obviously, 149M, I found, colon, 6, responsibilities, paragraph 11. Assessing a surcharge on a disposal of out-of-state solid waste in the amount of $1 per ton, which shall be assessed against the person transporting the out-of-state solid waste to the facility and not assessed against the facility. The proceeds shall be used by the department to reduce and offset general funds expenditures for solid waste management. Now, I assume that this is happening, and if it is, I need to ask, how much is this income weighed in the decision of granting permits to a landfill versus the weight of the community that's repeatedly voted no 14 or more times to reject expansion? How much is it weighed against the negative impact of the Amunuzic River watershed in all the towns downstream and NCS's repeated violations? How much revenue does DES receive from out-of-state waste being trucked to NCS? And since this revenue is being generated from out-of-state trash being trucked into and polluting Bethlehem, how much does DES return in value to our community? It seems that if there is money being collected at the expense of Bethlehem, there should be more manpower for DES to inspect NCS landfill more regularly. I firmly believe that if there had been more, if there are be more unannounced and more frequent and comprehensive inspections, DES would find more violations and, in the end, better protect New Hampshire's environment and the health of the residents of Bethlehem. Finally, DES knows that for years, NCS landfill has frequently been delinquent and noncompliant with following the rules set forth in their operating permit, 149M, and ENB's solid waste 800s. A few of the noncompliant areas that tests have shown or DS personnel have reported or have witnessed at NCS during random site visits over the past years include problems such as polluting groundwater, insufficient cover, not reporting required leachate data, sediment-blocking drainage culverts, illegally accepting asbestos, truckloads of American flags being landfill, odor and noise migrations off-site, spilling leachate, attracting wild animals such as bears and ravens, some going into yards, heavy cloud, storm drains, fast-filling, and running out of room for New Hampshire waste. Do you know how many more protocols established in the waste management rules and important procedures are being neglected and/or violated that are set forth to protect the environment and the well-being of the people of New Hampshire? Since NCS does not follow the rules that is set up to New Hampshire DES, it's your responsibility to deny this permit to stop the landfill from further jeopardizing the health and residence of Bethlehem and the Amunuzic River watershed. Thank you.
I'm going to take another first-time speaker, Michael Culver. And Michael, I apologize if I overlooked you before. I just got.
No, you didn't. I hadn't given that. I'm Mike Culver, 1315 Cherry Valley Road. Been a resident in Bethlehem for almost 20 years. Select board member for six years, profile school board member for six years, and on the zoning board for three years. I was on the board when we settled the 2012 settlement. What I'm going to talk to today, and what I usually talk to about, is I know the numbers. The numbers are simple. The town of Bethlehem has a revenue problem. Our biggest revenue generator, NCS landfill. If they walk away, the public benefit, we're going to lose roughly $3 to $5 in total per thousand on our tax rate. We're not, the town is not prepared to replace the transfer station and the trash pickup that we currently have, and they're not going to be prepared for it two years, three years, four years from now. We're not going to be able to afford to be prepared for it. They've tried to prepare for it one other time, when there were some issues with the transfer station, and the town attempted to run their own transfer station. Promises were made to the taxpayers. Taxpayers voted that they could do it for roughly under $200,000, and it failed miserably. And it was an operation that wasn't even close to what we have today. So right now, with the fill rates, the tipping fees, and the taxes, you know, that benefit alone is roughly $3 per thousand in our tax rate. You take that away, you take that away, we have to replace that, and it doesn't include the transfer station and our trash pickup. Our town can't afford it. So I would ask you, as far as the regulations and whether, you know, there's pollution problems and all that, I yield to you guys. That's what, you know, our town entrusts to you guys regulate and take care of. And I've been in the town for 20 years and haven't had a problem. So thanks.
Do we have any other first-time speakers?
I can put a card in.
Could you fill out a card?
I will.
Thank you.
Can I be first?
Thank you for your patience. Peter Roy.
Good evening, Peter Roy. Thank you for being here. I moved up to 486 South Road, Bethlehem, about 10 years ago from Massachusetts. I don't know if any of you people here are aware of the prior existence of the landfills in Massachusetts. Where I lived for all my life until I moved here. There was a landfill in the border of the town of Brockton and East Bridgewater. You approached this landfill, and I don't know what kind of DES they had running there, but this place was a mess. The land was gray as you approached it. The houses were gray, the grass, the trees were gray, and it stank. It stank to high heaven within a mile of the place, and everyone complained about it. The place was finally shut down. Casella does not run that kind of organization. They have a few hiccups in the road, things happen. Maybe it's the issues they are dealing with. There's pre-existing conditions. But this expansion process that they're going through right now is within their zone. It's within a district that's zoned for landfill. And if you just even set aside the economic benefits to the town of Bethlehem, where else are you going to put it on? Not in Dalton, I guess, but there isn't any other place that I'm aware of that's anywhere near the kind of capacity or the location that we have there. My understanding that way back in the 80s, there was three locations considered for landfill. Truro Road was one of them, and that's where it's been since. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Returning then to our second round, Virginia Jeffries?
I'll just submit a report.
Thank you. Wendy Whiten?
I just have two topics for you. Is this on?
Am I not beyond?
It seems to me much of what's been said for a long time is about violations and credibility and compliance and that sort of thing. And I mean, can one of you say in 25 words or less if that's a factor in your decision-making on an expansion like this? I mean, are there X number of compliance issues that make you draw a line and refuse an expansion? Is there X amount of water contamination that's not managed well that makes that happen? I mean, maybe, I understand, you may just refer me to a website, but, I mean, that seems a kind of basic question. Does that enter in? Does the record of the organization enter into your deliberation?
The simple answer is yes. Performance history and compliance is a factor which is considered. It's complex, but the simple answer is yes.
And is it delineated? Like, do you have guidelines, or it's more subjective?
It's not delineated point by point. There are, but it's, there are parameters. There's factors to consider, yeah.
I mean, my only other thought is, I understand, I hear people talk about their tax rates and their curbside pickup, but you know, Bethlehem went on a long time. I mean, I don't think this is really to your point of making your decision anyway, but, I mean, Bethlehem went a long time, did well without Casella for a long time, and we all pay high taxes. I live in a little town in Whitefield, and it is not easy. But I mean, we get by, and clearly, many towns in New Hampshire get by without a landfill helping their tax base. And, I mean, in time, this landfill is going to close whenever that happens, and that tax money's going to go away. So, I mean, whether the town deals with it now or in five years, it's going to have to be dealt with. And, I mean, clearly, that's something that any of us in these little North Country towns have to deal with, but I do believe Bethlehem will go on and thrive after NCS has finished its work here. Thank you again.
Thank you. Brian Cook?
Actually, one, two things. First of all, I want to be clear, because it may not have been from my comments earlier, that I'm hoping DES denies this permit for all the environmental reasons that people have discussed, all of the odor, all of the noise, you name it. And I'm not sure whether that was clear from my prior comments, but I wanted to focus on the public benefit thing then. I also want to ask on the public benefit tonnage front, I understand that in this back-and-forth that you've had with Casella about whether or not their fast-filling and all that, that Casella, NCS has come back and said that they believe that their 5.3-year clock starts on the day that that permit is issued. And is this, are you familiar with what I'm talking about, rather than on the day that they started filling that? And I'd like to say I find that rather ridiculous, because by that argument, if you were to give them this permit in April, that 2.3-year clock would start then, and you'd miss an entire year's worth of the others, since the two are kind of all interrelated. So at any rate, I think it behooves you, if that's going to be their attitude, to wait and issue that permit when this one is full, because otherwise, there's far less public benefit, quote-unquote, than is anticipated. The other things I have are just some kind of general questions and comments that have come up regarding the town transfer station, all that stuff. We have had a town transfer station committee meeting for two years to look into what happens afterwards, and ironically, Mike Culver's on that committee. He's had a lot on his plate lately, which everyone in town is aware of, but he hasn't been to meetings in, he closed for two years initially and then had a tough time with this. But, you know, we'll get through this. As Sarah said, every town here deals with their own waste. I love that people are so happy with the curbside pickup. A lot of us can't use it. I'm not going to bunk-bunk-bunk my things four tenths of a mile downhill to the closest road, and a lot of people here aren't able to use it. So you're hearing the good side of that. There are those of us who still do the transfer station thing in town. I'd be curious about, on the monthly reports, there is a column that says tickets, and it says, you know, six tickets from, three tickets from Rhode Island. Is a ticket a truck? Is a ticket the same as a truck? It looks like Joe has stepped out of the room for a minute. I would double-check with NCS on that. I presume a ticket is a truck. Kevin, do you know the answer to that? On the monthly report, or an ask?
It's a transaction.
So it's per-transaction, which is typically done by truck, tonnage. Okay. Okay. I'm just asking because the number of trucks that when they were selling the, starting to talk to Dalton, the number of trucks that they said were going to be in Dalton was far less than the number of tickets per day that are in Bethlehem, and yet they were talking about boards on edge, and it just, I thought maybe I misunderstood tickets. I'd also like to know why, it used to be that special-waste request letters were put on One Stop Data, so you could read and see where the special waste was coming from. Those haven't been there for a couple of years now, and there's interest in that. People want to know what are the sources of... of the special waste coming up here? Even, I mean, I'm curious about the industrial waste that came from New Jersey in July. You know, that's on the Casella monthly report. I don't ever believe I've seen ones for industrial waste. But nonetheless, I'd like to know why those are no longer on One Stop Data and ask if they could be restored.
I'm not familiar with that. I will have to look at it.
There used to be letters that were sent from, typically from NCES office, from Ina or from Kevin. They'd say, "We would like permission to use this special waste as daily cover." And it would say where it was coming from. It was from the gas station cleanup in Holliston, Massachusetts. Or you know, that sort of thing. And those are gone.
I'll have to look into it. I would have to look into it because otherwise I'd be making a guess. An educated guess, but a guess nonetheless. And I don't want to give you any false information. So let me look into it. Thank you.
On the same front, you could tell the legal department at DES that if you go to administrative, you go to the legal, and it's got all the enforcement actions, legal, whatever. Letters of deficiency stops at 2016. So if you go in and you look at administrative orders, you see 2019, 2018, 2017. If you go to letters of deficiency, you'd see 2016 and down. So someone just needs to update the website.
The legal unit has stopped posting letters of deficiency under their website. You can find them under the facility record on One Stop.
Okay. Thank you. My, one other comment was that, I think I recall three, about one a year or three in the past four years, unannounced inspections. And at every single one, there were violations found by DES. Inadequate daily cover was found every single time. And I know that you just came back. The third one was to check a daily cover. And they got a letter of deficiency for that. But I'm kind of curious about why that particular inspection didn't include more items. For example, they had been written up previously for not doing enough random load inspections. And yet, that didn't seem to be checked this time.
The department elected to do a focused inspection. They are one of four landfills that we have inspected for daily cover this year.
Okay. And then the final thing, I'm kind of, my impression, and I don't know this for sure. I'm not a zoning person. But my impression is that if I owned two contiguous lots and I wanted to build a swimming pool or, you know, right on my property line between the two lots, my understanding is that I can't do that, even if I own the abutting lot. So I'm kind of curious about how it is that NCES can go all the way to the property line without leaving any buffer or setback, even if they are their own abutter. And whether that's something that needs, you know, whether they need to get something from the town and whether DES would need to see if they got something from the town or what the...
So I can't speak to local approvals. But under the solid waste rules, we do have a defined facility boundary. And NCES has asked to modify as part of this application, I believe, their facility boundary to include a portion of the abutting property or to include portions of the abutting property so they meet the setback requirements. So by adding...
So they're using the abutted property as for part of this landfill essentially?
That they own, it's, the landfill would not be on that property, but it meets the buffer requirements if they add it to the facility boundary as defined by the state.
But that's not in the landfill district in Bethlehem? Or I mean, that's, they now...
I can't comment on the local zoning. I'm sorry. I'm just not, I can't comment.
Okay. So they have actually gone outside though? I mean, in terms of, the plans that they have provided to you actually go outside of that 61 acres?
The landfill footprint is shown inside District 5.
But part of the landfill is still outside?
The facility boundary is proposed to be beyond District 5.
Okay. And actually, I have to, one other comment. Is, I walked the river one time. That was sort of where the notorious seep comes down. And I understand that water tests are done downstream at the seep and upstream. But looking at the diagrams of where the upstream one is, it appears the upstream one is in the same vicinity, but just, you know, 25 feet or something upstream. And I'd just like to comment that in that walk down the river, there were quite a number of places where there was also that iron bacteria that you see, those orange ooze. And if one of the things you're testing for is, you know, in terms of, is an indicator of whether or not, if your upstream spot is actually downstream from some of these other orange oozes, which are indicative of iron, you know, as I understand it, it's some sort of an iron-eating bacteria, then those spots are going to have an elevated iron level, wouldn't they? Just from the, what's upstream from them? And I wonder whether it might not make more sense to have the upstream location be a good deal further upstream so that it's really out of the whole earth disturbance impact area there. And these were not, these were not anywhere near as striking in size as the main seep. But they were there. I mean, to the point that when I was, I actually came from upstream and I was walking down going, oh, is that it? And you know, once I got to where it actually was, you know, walking in the river, you could just see it from there. I went, oh, that's it. But there were about three times along where I saw enough orange glue that I thought, I wonder if that's it? I don't know. I hadn't been there since the days that, you know, in the decade or so. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dick Robey. Rita Farrell.
I'm not sure how the Department of Environmental Services operates. I think I'd love to be there when you're going over the information and find out how you look at what the law says. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm interested, but I don't expect an answer now. I'd like you to consider this. How does the Department of Environmental Services review the complaints? Review the community's concerns? And feed that into your decision to continually grant permits for expansion? A few years ago, I provided the department, no, I didn't provide it. I went to the Department of Environmental Services and asked in records place, how many odor complaints had been filed with the department? And documented 500 noise and odor complaints, particularly odor, within about 12 to 14 months. At one point, asbestos, the landfill was mined, was charged by the then Attorney General of New Hampshire, Kelly Ayotte, with having buried asbestos in the landfill that was trucked from the Mountain View Hotel. The Mountain View Hotel owner at that time was closed or redesigned or whatever, went to jail for 30 days for burying asbestos on the property. And trucks for three years went over these scales at NCES from that hotel, carrying waste from that hotel. And Casella was fined $500,000 of pittance, really, for that violation. For three years, asbestos being trucked into a landfill in Bethlehem from Whitefield. The state of Vermont has fined Casella at least three times. I remember a second time after violating the way they deal with competitors, truck drivers in Vermont, something like that. State of Vermont, state of New York, the state of Pennsylvania closed down a transfer station at one point because of violations by a Casella facility there. The Center for Disease Control in Atlanta, Georgia, when there was a request by community of the people in the town of Bethlehem, please tell us if there's any data, any statistics about cancer incidence in the town of Bethlehem that is valid information compared with outside areas? And have you ever checked to see what that result was? Because that was very much in the minds of the people when we found that we had a higher incidence than the surrounding communities. The tramway, beautiful tramway trip up Canaan Mountain. Years ago, how many of you have ever taken the tramway? Years ago, when you'd go up the mountain and you see this blotch on the landscape, because it's all green, it's all beautiful. You see a blotch on the landscape. And people would say, what's that? And the guys on the tramway would say, they like to call it Mount Casella. And that was a big joke. And the people who were tourists would say, oh, not knowing what that meant. I went up just recently a couple of times this year. It is huge. It has grown enormously. But when people said, what's that? The operator said, I don't know. And I asked him, I said, you know what that is afterwards? And he said, yes, but people are here for a good time and they don't want to hear about a landfill being over there. So now we don't even tell the truth on Canaan Mountain about what's going on in that beautiful vista from the tramway. As far as the issue, Julie raised the issue about being your own abutter. There is now a case pending which says you cannot be your own abutter. We'll see what the result of that is. Because Casella abuts its own landfill and practices that philosophy of saying you can't be your own abutter. And it would be interesting to see how that turns out. And I would urge the DES to consider that too. Told you about the fine that was settled. The $500,000 fine was, I don't know, I'm just going with my nose, but they're not bad for it. But there was a lawsuit, fine, filed, sorry, by the Attorney General of New Hampshire. Were drafted and filed at that time. Kelly Ayotte was the Attorney General. And that was settled before it ever became widespread information, which was to say that Casella had trucked that asbestos from the Mountain View Hotel to the landfill. So that was quieted down. Nothing ever came beyond. Casella had paid that $500,000 fine. But that's how that was settled politically. I used to live at Bethlehem Junction, which is down the road from Casella. It's right at the end of Tudor Road. And at midnight, we'd have what my old chemistry teacher used to call a choking odor. A choking odor. Something was burning. And we were downwind from it. And it would come in the windows and then we had to shut the windows. My husband has asbestosis at this point, which is very difficult to trace. But I'm saying something that I don't have direct whatever is happening there.
Rita, your time is up. And it's a little awkward because I'm not sure if I have other speakers coming after you.
I'll finish, and I'll finish up then.
Yeah. If you can wind up, please.
I wonder if we could sit in and listen to you review the application and hear how your discussion goes is that an open part of government? When you sit and you discuss the application for an expansion once again, and you talk about, you go down through your list, and you go down through the RSA, can the public sit in on that discussion? I'm asking that question now.
That it's not a public process. The agency documents the basis of its decision and publishes a record of decision. That will be public.
So that is outside 91A, RSA 91A, which is the public right to know? Is there a reason for that? Is there a reason why you wouldn't want, well, not to participate, but just to listen and hear how you make your decisions and what the input is? And how you decide the public benefit? Is that outside RSA 91A, which is the right-to-know New Hampshire law?
I'm not sure I'm qualified to answer that. I'll get you an answer for that. I am telling you that the agency's review process is well documented. It's not typically a public process. And it's done over a long period of time. The technical review is ongoing at this time. It occurs over many days, many weeks. It's not done in one sitting.
I understand. I'm still asking the same question.
And again, I answered the question. I am not...
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Excuse me, you did not like. I'm asking about 91A, the right to know.
And I said I'm not qualified to opine on that. We will provide an answer to you by someone who is qualified.
Thank you. So if I file a 91A and say I would like to sit in on the next evaluation, however many days, please don't interrupt me. However many days you will respond about whether or not you have to have, allow anybody access to hear, not to participate, but to hear how you review under 91A, the public right to know.
If you file that, you will get a response, yes.
Thank you.
I have Gail Robinson. And we said Rebecca Brown had already left. So I've gone to the cards twice. Do I have anyone who hasn't spoken yet that wants to?
Could I just ask another question?
All right.
I wanted to know, I wasn't sure. It was mentioned earlier in the evening. In the review process for the application, does substantial provision, is that considered in terms of closure? And I think in the business world, it'd be called a performance bond, that in terms of when, wherever the landfill would cease operating, that there is dedicated money already there for the closure process and any rehabilitation that becomes necessary? Is that part of the application review?
The application includes provisions for providing, providing a financial assurance plan for closure and post-closure to guarantee those costs, yes.
And that is already part of the application for this application?
Yes. That's under review.
Can you tell us what that amount is?
Off the top of my head, no.
Is there anybody here still from NCES that knows that, can say that?
Round numbers, I think it's $8 billion for closure.
Sorry?
Just round numbers. And on my memory, it's around $8 billion for closure and $10 million for post. and like nine million dollars for post closure or vice versa.
So if those two are the right numbers, then you're saying 17 million dollars is dedicated for closure and eventualities? Does DES evaluate that number or the X number, whatever it happens to be for a particular application in terms of the operation that that application is for? And that may be attached to it? Does DES evaluate whether, in this case, 17 million dollars?
Whether that's an adequate figure? Yes, we do. Sir, could I, for the record, have you state your name and address?
Sure. Mark Chain, 46 Agassi Street, here in town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have other speakers who have not come forward? Could you s...
My name is Nancy Dikowski. I'm a Bethlehem resident. I live at 25 Main Street. When is the decision expected on this expansion?
That's a good question.
So right now, the, the public comment period is supposed to close on December 20th at 4:00 PM. From that date, the department by rule has 30 days to make a decision and issue it. There are caveats in the law that allow us to request additional time from the applicant. But strict accordance with the rules in the law would be 30 days after close of the public hearing. Or the public hearing.
Julie?
I just have one other comment since it came up in public comment about comparing this landfill favorably to Brockton and the disaster that was Brockton. I, I think it's worth noting that depending on when Mr. Roy was talking about... What, this is like, oh, sorry. Okay, that depending on when people are talking about Brockton, if you're talking about Brockton at the end of a slide, that was indeed Casella. They actually were, they, they did the final capping enclosure, which they did with waste, a million tons of whatever, in 2003, '04, '05, somewhere in there. So I just don't know what time period it's being referred to, but it could well have been a Casella operation.
Thank you. Do I have other first time speakers? Shall I run through the cards a second time? A third time? I'm losing track here. Happy to do so. Sir, I... So, yeah, you, you actually...
If you want to speak before anybody else wants to speak.
Please.
Okay. I just wanted to remind everyone that I'm in favor of this minor expansion. As long as Shaw Supermarket has three rows of disposable cookware, as long as they're selling packaging that's 10 times what it needs to be, someplace has got to be for this place to go. The science is evolving about the disposal of waste products. We can't just close a landfill without any other place to put it. This stuff will pile up somewhere despite what anybody wants to think about it. You know, if they get fined for doing something wrong, that's, that's what you guys are for. Let them pay their fines, let them evolve and let, let the science evolve to cover it and, and figure out ways of dealing with this. But in the meantime, this is a minor expansion. It's only a few more years. And then we'll be up the so-called creek without a paddle. Thank you.
And Mr. Roy, for the record, could you state your name and address for the record?
Peter Roy, 486 South Road, Bethlehem.
Thank you. Rita?
I've commented on that.
Could you come to the mic, please?
Yes, I will. I just want to make sure that I heard it right, what you said there. I just want to ask, I want to make sure that I heard correctly what Peter said. I'm sure I did. So I want to say something that I'm not sure of having heard. Well, your point was...
I don't, I don't think we're supposed to have this.
Well, no, I'm not, I'd like to comment on it. I'd like to comment on it, but I want to make sure I'm commenting correctly.
Mr. Roy expressed the view that the application should be approved, that it was for a short period of time and that there was an overall benefit. I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mr. Roy, but...
That's a joke.
Okay, thank you.
There's something else, but, okay. I'll come back in a minute. I'll see if I can wind up.
We're going to close if there's no one else. So if you have something you want to provide in the form of testimony, we'd be happy to hear it. Other than that, we're, we're going to wind down here.
I'll send it in too.
That would be appreciated. Thank you. I do see Mr. Swan raising his hand, so...
Hi, John Swan, 25 Cashman Road, Dalton, New Hampshire. I guess kind of as an afterthought, considering the, the state legislature's committee on recycling and waste streams that was just recently released along with the data relative to actual landfill capacity in the state, and I know several people have mentioned, oh, where's, where's it going to go? But if you look at like, for example, Mount Carberry up in Success, they imported, looks like about 90,000 tons of waste from out of state, which is nearly half of what is going into NCES Bethlehem from in-state New Hampshire. So it certainly looks like Carberry has capacity to handle that as well as obviously Turnkey and Rochester has plenty of capacity. Are you looking into that kind of information as well in terms of the actual capacity of other sites in terms of handling New Hampshire's waste? Because this is a golden opportunity to get rid of one of the two importers of out-of-state trash without violating the interstate commerce clause because they have nowhere else to go. And ultimately, what, their, their, their final stage six permit is what, 2023, 2025? Then after that, they're either A, going to go back to Bethlehem and obviously upset people again, or it has to be closed. So what happens after 2025? And we certainly don't want a landfill in Dalton. We think it's a terrible location. I know obviously that's down the road. But it seems like there's already capacity in the state and taking away that 34% of imported trash that would be coming into New Hampshire thanks to Casella and north country towns going to Mount Carberry in Success, which Dalton right now is actually interested in looking at, but because Mount, Mount Carberry won't even talk to the select board from Dalton because they're afraid of being sued by this company, which as we've learned in Dalton, is a bully and is litigious. So I guess my question is, do you look at the actual landfill capacity in the state for New Hampshire trash in your ultimate decision here? Because everyone's talking about a crisis, but the only capacity crisis that I've seen in looking at, the numbers in that report confirms it, the, the capacity shortfall is Casella's to import out-of-state trash and thus make more money. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I just clarify what I wanted to say before?
Rita? Rita, for record, please state your name and address.
52 Agassi Street, Bethlehem.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was mentioned made much earlier in this discussion about the fact that interstate commerce clause says that you cannot deny anybody bringing, wanting to bring trash into your state from out of state. That went way back decades to a case in New Jersey in Philadelphia. New Jersey built a big facility to be able to take care of its trash. Philadelphia across the river looked and says, hey, that sounds great. You'd like to bring our trash there. And New Jersey said, no, no, we spent all the money building this. You can't bring your trash here. Please check the record on that. There's a lawsuit, it's a case. And as a result, it went all the way up to the courts and the courts decided that you cannot block interstate commerce. Now that has remained on the books since then. And at some point, it seems ridiculous to say that commerce means bringing garbage from one state to another state. And I think that that is something that I would like to see the DES consider in status, what the status is of that particular argument. It was decades ago. You see, consider that particular argument. And from the program here, I see that you're all PEs. Everybody's a professional engineer. You have a PE next to your name. I'm sure that's what it stands for.
Jamie and I are licensed engineers, yes.
You two are and not, but anyway. I come from a family of engineers and I would hope that the way that you look at all of these, all this information with the facts and the law, facts and law, will be what influences the decision by this Department of Environmental Services. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last call on people who want to testify. I see none. Then the oral testimony part of this hearing is closed. I want to remind you that the department will continue to accept comments in written format between now and 4:00 PM on December 20th. Sorry, violating my own rule here. That's why I have Jamie to remind me. So again, we've concluded the oral testimony part of this public hearing. We are accepting written testimony from now through December 20th, that's a Friday, at 4:00 PM. The instructions for submitting that to the department is found in the written materials we have here, the public notice. So I encourage you to take that home and have it handy. And with that, I want to express my appreciation for the time all of you took to come out tonight. I know it's not easy to do so and to sit here and be patient with your opportunity to speak. It does matter to the department. The testimony does matter. So we very much appreciate you honoring the process and participating in it. And again, if you want to be notified of the decision, if you're on the sign-up cards, we will provide that notice. If you did not speak and you want to be provided notice, please complete the list on your way out. There's an eight and a half by 11 list. And with that, I declare the oral part of this hearing closed. And it looks to me like we're at 8:44.